All right, good evening. I'd like to call the September 10th, 2020 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I would like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Glover for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Precious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, that you have brought us together to do the, make decisions for what's best for the city of Greenville. We thank you, Lord, for protecting our city, protecting the people in the city. And God, we thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to serve. We just ask you, God, that you will continue to shine your light down on the city of Greenville and its citizens, that we will even grow more closer and better together. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Now, I'd like to call on the city clerk for the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley, you're muted.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
Mayor Connolly, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, do we have any recommended changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening. I do think that the city attorney may have one item to add.
All right.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I recommend that the Council adopt a motion to recess and add that toward the end of the agenda and call it Roman numeral 12 and change the adjournment to Roman numeral 13. And the purpose of the motion to recess is to allow the 24-hour written comment period after the subject of public hearings to expire pursuant to the state law dealing with remote meetings.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion?
That moved. Councilmember Bell?
Second. Meyerhofer.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer to approve the agenda plus add the motion to recess. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Member Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after the persons who registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor Connolly, our first speaker is Mr. Jonathan Taft. His topic is Community Appearance Commission.
All right.
Mayor, council members, my name is Jonathan Taft. I know many of you, some of you I don't know so well, but just to give a little bit of background, I'm a, you know, born in Greenville, I went to South Greenville, went to CMFs, and then Rose. I currently serve on the Pitt Greenville Chamber of Commerce as, on the Board of Directors, Executive Committee as Chairman-elect, as well as the Pitt Community College Foundation Board of Directors and the Charleston School of Foundation Board. I'm not trying to impress you with these things, I'm just trying to point out that I care a lot about this local community. The reason that I'm in front of you today has a lot to do with two basically separate matters. And the first comes from, you know, the fact that, the first is, I want to say that I really appreciate the work by the council and by the mayor during these hard times with COVID. Y'all have done an excellent job. I cannot applaud you enough and I really appreciate it. The second topic has to do with the appearance of our community. And I guess, when I first joined the Community Appearance Commission a couple of years ago, you know, we realized that the CAC, the Community Appearance Commission was created a long time ago and, and the work of the people that served on that commission and the staff that worked on that commission did an incredible job. But as we both, as we all know, Greenville has grown very, very much over the last, you know, few decades. And, and I don't think that the CAC has grown with it. And so, so what transpired about six or seven months ago was that the members of the CAC and myself discussed how we could do more for the community, how we could, how we could help and assist the Greenville community and its appearance and, and make a positive impact on our community and, and attract business, businesses and keep, you know, keep people staying in Greenville. When the council decided that it would be a good idea to combine the Neighborhood Board Association with the Community Appearance Commission, the members of the CAC decided this is a perfect time to kind of lay out what our, what our plans have been for the last several months. And, you know, basically, the CAC has outgrown its shoes. We do not, we've decided to not join the council and what we've decided to do is to offer to keep the CAC in existence and make, I mean, and draft a new purpose and mission statement for the CAC. As you all know, there's, you know, probably been a half a billion dollars worth of real estate investment and, and other types of investments.
That's time.
Oh, that's it? Okay, well, if I can finish, I would just say that the CAC is committed to remaining alive and would like to help assist the, you know, the planning and permitting and the council in, in any, any items that regard the down, the community appearance that they deem not worth their time. We would like to help and assist. We're not asking for money, we're not asking for power. We think that, as the city has grown, that like other cities, a Community Appearance Commission should exist. And I'm sorry I didn't get that out in, you know, perfectly said words, but I hope the point was, was made.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taft, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Mayor Connolly, the next speaker that we have registered is Ms. Rosemary Scott. I'm not sure if she's on the Zoom meeting right now, but Ms. Rosemary Scott, you have three minutes to address the city council. Ms. Rosemary Scott, if you are in the room, you can unmute yourself and address the city council, you have three minutes. Mayor Connolly, I don't see any indication that she is here in the room.
All right, well, if, if she does pop up again, we'll be happy to go back to her. Who is our next speaker?
We do not have any further additional registered speakers, but if you will just let me check back the public input mailbox, I'll see if we received any comments there.
All right.
Okay, I'm sorry, we do have one message in here and I'm just skimming it to see if it would be more appropriate to be read during one of the public hearings, but... Okay, yes, I think this would probably be best to be read during public comment. I'll go ahead and read it.
Okay.
It is from a Mr. Chris Chianchio, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, but this is his message. And, hold on, I will just start the timer. Our last two mayors have been failures at anything other than trying to expand their own real estate empires at the taxpayers' expense. They aren't fit to shine Trump's shoes, but they no doubt envision themselves as movers and shakers in the mighty world of Greenville real estate. So they play the game here mostly with taxpayer allowances and money from shady, out-of-state investors. The town and its honest citizens pay the price of the lack of vision and clog traffic, flood-prone and worn roads, and buildings stacked on top of other empty buildings. Greenville real estate is sad, COVID didn't kill it. Vacancy signs are all over town for office space since the fall of 2019. Office space is never coming back. How many empty Rite-Aids do we have left to fill? We want retail's dead too. Yet all over new projects are sprouting up with hot money like the fits of an alcoholic angling for one more beer after they've crashed their car. Student housing is just dead, and COVID did kill it. No one would invest in a student housing project that not one single student would ever live in like the one where the Jolly Roger used to be. I've never seen a building actually being birthed before, but here we are. The smart money, not the Greenville real estate backslappers, know how to swindle towns like this. The local grifters are in over their heads and dragging the rest of the town with them. We will be lucky if those student housing projects aren't cracked then, when ECU in-person students swindle to 15,000. Now to save us in the nick of time, a certain former mayor, fresh off failure, trying to run the global transport, is back to get his hands into Greenville real estate government complex just as the whole dinosaur dies via an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission by a partner in crime on the council. And let me add one more thing with deadly seriousness, everyone that's bribery is involved with these decisions. I don't need the paid agitators Walmart hire to tell us how much we need a new one. The council commission and bagman can't.
Three minutes is up.
The saddest part is you are, you and local government have probably sold us to the hucksters for 30 shekels when they are willing to give 50.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any other comments during the public comment period?
No, no, sir, that is it.
All right. Is Ms. Scott, one more call for Ms. Scott, see if she's available on the line?
Ms. Rosemary Scott, if you are here, you can unmute your mic and address the council, you have three minutes. I'm gonna do, I tried to do a quick search. I'm sorry, Mayor Connolly, I do not see her in here.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Without anyone, without anybody else present, I'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
First board that we have is the Historic Preservation Commission, Councilmember Monica Daniels.
Continue.
Housing Authority, Councilmember Rick Smiley?
I have somebody who's considering it and I'll give an, I'll have a name and a talent bank form, I think, this week, and if I can get that done, I'll try to get an appointment done on Monday.
Okay. Human Relations Council, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
I'd like to appoint Christina Wei, W Y.
Second.
I think that's Christina Wu, yes, ma'am.
Is it Wu?
Yeah.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Oh, yeah, Will did.
All right, who, who had the second?
Will.
All right. Motion's been made by council, excuse me, by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, congratulations, Ms. Wu.
The next appointment that we have is a county nomination for the Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Continue, please.
Next, we have the Police Community Relations Committee. And just a reminder, these are our direct appointments, Councilmember Will Bell?
Continue, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Carol, Carol Nyppol.
Second.
Oh, that's a direct appointment.
I'm sorry.
All right, and the last board that we have is the Youth Council. Oh, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Okay, we don't have any, so we'll continue that one.
Mayor Connolly, that concludes the appointments.
All right, thank you very much, and congratulations to Ms. Nyppol for being appointed to the Police Community Relations Committee. All right, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items: a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easements for Langston West Phase 2, Section 2, and Pearmore Farms Phase 4, Section 2 cluster. Item number three is a contract award for the fiscal year 2021 Stormwater On-Call Pipe Repair Project. Item number four is a public art recommendation for a mural at the Art Lab located at 729 Dickinson Avenue. Item number five is a contract for services with Uptown Greenville. And item number six are various tax refunds greater than $100. The consent agenda, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone like to make any changes to consent agenda or want, like to?
Move to approve it, Meyerhofer.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move on to new business, which are the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or a representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. And we ask for your cooperation. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, the first public hearing, is an ordinance to annex the Black Welder Properties LLC property involving 3.879 acres located between Greenville Boulevard and Tupper Drive and south of Marine Avenue. And I will turn that over to Shontae Gooby, lead planner for that presentation. Ms. Gooby?
All right, good evening. I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, hopefully everyone can see that?
Yes.
All right. So this is an annexation request. It is located in the northeastern quadrant of the, of the city. It is specifically located at, I'm sorry, it's specifically located between Greenville Boulevard and Tupper Drive. It doesn't, are my slides moving? Adults, okay, there we go. So we're gonna skip on again. This is along Greenville Boulevard and Tupper Drive. Parker's Free Wheel Baptist Church is across the street. It is for almost four acres. It would be located in Voting District Number One, has 15,000 square feet of office space already located on the property, and the estimated tax value is $1.1 million. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Gooby. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? All right, seen none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item, and I'm looking right now at the public input inbox, and I do not see any, any emails for this item as well.
Okay. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and looking at the inbox, we do not have any comments in opposition either.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. Seen no discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is an ordinance to annex the Edmondson Properties LLC property involving 6.771 acres located at the northeastern corner of the intersection of Allen Road and Briar Cliff Drive. Again, Ms. Gooby.
Okay, all right, this request is located in the western section of the city. It's specifically located at, near the corner of Allen Road and Briar Cliff Drive. The property's shown in red. The existing city limits are shown in green. It is in the Swift Creek watershed. It'll be located in Voting District Number One. The anticipated development is approximately 70 to 75 multifamily units with the estimated tax value at $10.5 million, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? All right, thank you. Those who speak, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. I think you're on mute.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item, and I'm gonna check the public input box really quick. And we don't have any messages in favor for this item as well.
All right, thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item.
All right.
And looking at the inbox, we have not received any messages in opposition either.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for the board discussion. Seen none. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. We'll move on now to public hearing number three. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is an ordinance to annex West Haven South Lot 2, Section 5, involving 1.956 acres located south of Regency Boulevard along the eastern right of way of Blazer Drive. Proposed. Again, I will turn that over to Ms. Gooby.
This property is located in the southern section of the city. It's located south of Regency Boulevard, so to the north you have West Haven subdivision, to the east you have Shamrock subdivision. This is Blazer Drive. It actually hasn't been built yet, so that's why we're calling it proposed. Subject property is in red. The existing city limits are in green. This development, it could possibly be 10 multifamily units. It's located in the Fork Swamp Canal watershed. It'll be located in Voting District Number Five, and the estimated tax value is $1.5 million, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gooby. Are there any questions?
Yeah, what is the recommended stormwater detention in Fork Swamp?
I think this is 20... I'm sorry?
Or required stormwater detention?
I think this is 25-year detention for this one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Gooby? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item, and I will look at the inbox, and we do not have any comments in favor of this item either.
All right, thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers in opposition to this item, and just looking at the inbox, we don't have any comments submitted in opposition either.
All right, thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. All right, no discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public hearing, or the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll move on to item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10, item number 10 is an ordinance requested by Amy A. Edwards to rezone a total of 14.221 acres located along Porter Town Road between Eastern Pines Road and the Norfolk Southern Railroad from RA 20 to General Commercial. That will be 5.03 acres and from R 6, and the remainder of it, the 9.183 acres to R 6. And with that, I will turn it on to, over to Brad Sevier for the presentation. Brad?
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Brad Sevier, and I'm a planner here on city staff. As you can see on this general location map, the project is located in the eastern section of the city. This is an aerial of the subject property. It's at the intersection of Porter Town Road and Eastern Pines Road. Here's a picture of the property. You can see it's undeveloped currently. The survey shows the property to be 14.221 acres, and you can see that northern tract is the tract that's designated for, that's requested to be General Commercial, and the southern tract is requested to be R 6 Residential. Existing land use is vacant. There's nothing on the property currently. The subject property is not in the floodplain, however, it is in the Hardy Creek watershed, and if stormwater rules were to apply... and if stormwater rules were to apply, it would require 10-year detention as well as nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The rezoning request has the potential to generate 4,688 trips per day. It's important to note that the road configuration at Portertown and Eastern Pine Roads is slated to change. That area is supposed to have a roundabout built there, and so that will mitigate some of the impacts of the traffic generated by this request. The current zoning for the property is RA 20, and with this zoning category, it could accommodate about 18 single-family residences. And with the requested rezoning, it could accommodate, on that northern tract, in the commercial, it could accommodate about 40,000 square feet of commercial, and in the southern tract, that tract two, it could accommodate about 110 multifamily units. That's one, two, and three-bedroom units. The future land use and character map shows the area to be commercial at the intersection of Eastern Pines Road and Portertown Road, transitioning back into the traditional neighborhood, medium to high density. The residential parcel, that's in compliance with that traditional neighborhood, medium to high density, and of course, the commercial tracks very well with the commercial request at the intersection there. And you can see there's kind of a bit of a commercial node that's developed at the intersection of Eastern Pines and Portertown. The track directly across is a commercial tract, and that's a developed commercial tract already, so there is already commercial development right at that intersection. The request is in compliance with the Horizon's 2026 Plan as well as the future land use and character map, so staff recommends approval. And then also, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they voted seven to one to approve the request. That was on August 20th last month, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sevier?
I have some.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
Can you go over the traffic report? What's the, what's the, what's the capacity of the road? What's the current traffic on the road, and what the full build-out traffic would be based upon your estimate of the additional trips?
Sure. I believe that Rick DeCesar, the city's traffic engineer, is here tonight, and I would defer to him to get more specific about the traffic impacts.
Maybe you can go back to the map when he does that.
Yeah, I'm unmuted, but I'm trying to start my video, and it says the host has stopped it.
Sorry about that, Rick. Let me see what we can do here.
As long as you can hear me, I can continue.
Yep. You can go ahead and continue, and I'll see what I can do to get your video up.
Should be good.
You should go ahead, you can go ahead, Rick. Did we mute him?
Brad, you've got to stop.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Now you can go ahead.
This would actually add traffic, the way we looked at this, adding traffic to both Portertown Road and Eastern Pines Road. The current, the current capacity of Portertown is of, or the current ADT is 14,000.
Rick, are you there?
I've been speaking. I don't know why I keep switching off here. Can you hear me?
Now we can. Yes.
Your last comment was the current ADT is 14,000.
Okay. The current ADT is 14,000. The design ADT is 13, roughly 13,000, so it's overcapacity now. The future capacity will be 30, roughly 40,000 with the DOT improvements. As far as Eastern Pines, the current ADT is roughly 3,700. The design ADT is about 13,000. What we're adding actually is roughly 12% to Portertown west of the site, 12% east of the site, and on Eastern Pines, roughly, let's say 38% increase over what is currently zoned. Not over the current ADT, what is, what, if we did the current zoning, the proposed zoning would be about a 38% increase over the current zoning.
So the net increase is, if I'm reading right, is 4,688 trips per day, measured against a 13,000 ADT design that's already at 14,000 ADTs.
That's correct.
And the planned DOT improvement of this road is, we, you know, is, do you have an estimate as to when that's likely to take place?
Not really, because everything has been, with the DOT, all their projects have been kind of put on hold because of, because of COVID and, and some of their financial commitments. So we really don't have a firm date. Originally, it was supposed to be in about two years, but now I have, we have no indication from them when it's actually going to happen.
Is, do we think it's, does anybody think it's likely to happen in the next five years?
I would think so within the next five. Because that was a, that was a priority project, and it was already committed, and it was already, financial money is secured, and it was, it was already scheduled until, until we got placed in this predicament here.
But at any rate, until that, until that project happens, if this, this rezoning would basically take that road over 100%, 150% capacity essentially.
Well, yeah, I, I can't confirm that. Like I said, this, the way we looked at it, we're splitting some in Portertown and some on Eastern Pines. It was a 12% increase on Portertown, and on Eastern Pines, it was, it was a 38% increase.
And, and Mr. DeCesar, that would be at the time of build-out, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for answering those questions.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first registered speaker that we have is Mr. Mike Baldwin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Hope you're doing well. My name's Mike Baldwin. I represent Amy Edwards. Staff has done a good, good job of kind of laying out what I would talk about, as well as Rick DeCesar's comments. This plat, rezoning plat is in compliance with the land use character map. It blends with the commercial property on the north of the railroad track back into the, what was referred to as like a commercial node at the intersection of Eastern Pines Road and, and Portertown Road. When we worked on the, what used to be the old 711 at the southwest corner of Portertown and Eastern Pines, we were able to gain the new plans for the roundabout and the road widening improvements that, that are going to take place at that intersection and along Portertown. So we've been able to accurately overlay those on the plan, so you can see what you'll have in, in the end. And yes, like, like any rezoning that we asked for, it's, well, most rezonings that we asked for, there's always a traffic increase. Those traffic increases are always based on full build-out. So, you know, I think, you know, a reasonable timeframe, Mr. Smiley, you asked of when DOT can release money again for these, because these were on the fast track to get built. This road, like Allen Road, were, were along the, at the same stage. So there's a, you know, five years will slip by pretty quick when you're developing property. By the time you do, you do diligence, and there's, you know, there's a lot of people that might not be interested in the, the commercial property quite so soon as the, as the R 6, simply because for their businesses to thrive, the, the road needs to be adequate ingress and egress from it, and provide safe turn, left turns in and right turns and left turns out. And until the improvements are made, we'll, we'll be, even though it's, it's spending good money upfront before improvements are made, we will still have to do traffic mitigation of left-hand turn lanes and other traffic improvements, and, and we'll have some, some driveway cut restrictions until then. So I, I think between the, the DOT and Rick's office, it, traffic will, to the increased traffic will be mitigated until we get to the, the build-out of the improvements when we, when we do have a capacity of 40,000. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
I have some.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
Could you go into a little more detail about how you intend to mitigate traffic for 4,600 trips a day on a road that's already overcapacity?
Sure. Right-hand decel lanes, left-hand turn lanes, right-in, right-outs. There's, there's a combination of, of traffic mitigation.
How many trips a day would that remove from the road?
Mr. Smiley, at a, at a rezoning stage, I can't say that.
But you do not regard five years as particularly a long time to wait?
To, to be completed, no, I, I don't. I mean, we've got, let's see, 14, 14 total acres, so, you know, it, it's not, it's not going to happen overnight, the development of that. The sewer, the, the big thing, Mr. Smiley, is this is in ETJ, so sewer has to be extended to the property. The sewer currently right now is at Hardy Creek, so it has to be extended from Hardy Creek behind what would be the eastern line of Willa Run. It would have to be extended to this property. It is going to probably take some other property input to, to fund a sewer extension of that, of that cost.
Any other questions?
Never the question.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Baldwin? All right. Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers to speak in favor of this item.
All right.
And I am looking in our inbox, and I don't see any messages or inputs submitted at the public input box.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
I would like to note that Mr. Robert Williams had registered to speak in opposition, but he has emailed this morning to withdraw his name. Beyond that, we don't have any additional registered speakers in opposition, and I'm looking in our inbox, and we have not received any messages in opposition for this item either.
Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion.
I, Connor?
Councilmember Smiley?
Obviously, we're not voting tonight, but I would just remind everybody that, you know, we've been, we've turned down rezonings along this corridor before because of the excessive traffic already on the road. You know, the numbers speak for themselves. It's, you know, it's already at 110% capacity. This would put another 40 or 38, 40% capacity on it. That adds up to 150 in my mind. The applicant said he doesn't consider five years to be a long time, so, you know, it seems to me that it's not a bad land use, it's just premature, and I would encourage us to, you know, take the applicant at his word that another few years would not be a hardship, and to, to deny the rezoning at this point.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smiley. Anyone else have any other comments or discussions? Seeing none, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is an ordinance requested by Happy Trail Farms LLC to rezone 33.849 acres located north of the intersection of Herman-Garros Road and Portertown Road from RA 20 to R 6S. And again, I will turn that over to Brad Sevier.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brad Sevier again with the planning staff. As you can see, this project is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. It's at that red star on this general location map. Here's an aerial of the property. You can see it runs along Portertown Road. Here's a picture of the property, and it's undeveloped, as you can see. The survey indicates that the property is 33.849 acres in total. The existing land use is vacant. The property is undeveloped at this time. A portion of the property is in the floodplain map, and, and the property is in the Hardy Creek watershed, and if stormwater rules were to apply, 10-year detention would be required as well as nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The request has the potential to generate a net increase of 766 trips per day along Portertown Road. The property is currently zoned RA 20, and with its current zoning, it could accommodate about 67 single-family residences, and with the requested rezoning, that could go up to 147 single-family residences. The future land use and character map shows this area is the traditional neighborhood, low to medium-density character type, which the request does conform to. The request is in compliance with the future land use and character map as well as the Horizon's 2026 future land use plan, so staff recommends approval of the request as submitted. And at their August 20th, 2020 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. I think you're muted.
Hey, I'm sorry about that. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first registered speaker that we have is Mr. Mike Baldwin.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Mike Baldwin, and I represent Mr. Woody Richard, who is the manager of Happy Trail Farms. This property has a little history with the planning department, GEC, and several entities. Back in 2007, a group of developers had this property, well, they bought this property, and wanted to develop it into larger lots, much like countywide lots, and presented a Plymouth plat to the City of Greenville Planning Department. The plat, I'm not sure if it ever went to planning board or not, or if it got stuck in the review process, but... in the review process, but the western, excuse me, the eastern line of this property, the common boundary with this property in Forest Glen is the, is the, uh, easternmost ETJ line of the City of Greenville. And any property in this ETJ, Greenville Utilities has the right to say whether they want the property to be served with sewer or not, public sewer or not. So after, and, and I wasn't involved, I didn't represent those clients at that time, those developers, but I was, was, I got into it after that. Greenville Utilities decided, they were adamant that they wanted to serve this site with sanitary sewer, uh, which again is the sanitary sewer, uh, kind of back behind Arbor Hills where I was referring to the last request, back in the Willa Run Arbor Hills area. Um, the, the cost to extend that sanitary sewer, um, and to develop the larger lots, uh, that kind of mixed with, uh, some of the other ones in the area, was cost prohibitive. So they ended up selling the, uh, the project to another developer who had a plan to develop this property that would allow, uh, a, a lot yield and, uh, that would absorb the, the cost of bringing sewer to it and eventually installing the roads to city standards and annexed into the city. Uh, that plat was, uh, that subdivision was named as Porter's Point. Uh, that went through all the approvals, uh, sewer, water, uh, road, uh, left and, uh, right-hand turn lane, left-hand turn lane, uh, full-blown construction drawings of 98 lots of a cluster-type development. Uh, and then 2008 came and the, the property has sat idle ever since then. The, um, the, uh, the, the developers decided not to move forward. So as it stands right now, using the cluster development rules, it will allow for 98-plus lots of, uh, you know, smaller R six lots. But what the, uh, Mr. Witcher would rather do, instead of a developer having to, to go with the cluster route, he would, uh, rather it just be able to be treated as a straight R six S subdivision, which would be 6,000 square foot lots. Basically, I'm, I'm sure the, the same or less lot yield because when you do cluster, you can go below what the, uh, the lot, the lot size requirements are in a normal R six S zoning. Uh, in the planning board, um, meeting that we had last month, some of the, um, a few of the residents in the, uh, adjoining, Mr. Klinger to the north, uh, commented about, you know, and naturally so, the environmental concerns. And then since then, Anne Massey has, um, has commented as well, and rightfully so, rightfully so, excuse me. But this could not be, in my opinion, a, a better piece of property where adjoining properties are buffered by the environmental constraints that will affect this property. You can see on the map, the rezoning map that we submitted, um, you've got, uh, quite a bit of, of wetlands along the western and the northern line. You've got the Tar Pamp, Riparian Buffer, you've got the floodway. Uh, so there's a lot of, um, and you've got, this is one site, unlike the majority of Pitt County, this is one site that has a lot, a lot of top, excuse me, topographic relief. The, uh, there's a lot of relief, uh, along the, um, the western property line where it goes down to the, the lowlands and, uh, same on the, uh, north side. So I think we're going to be able to really, uh, provide a, develop the property in the future and provide a, a good, a good buffer between the adjoining properties, which on their property as well, just like the Wanda Cox Harrington property, they have the same type of buffers already in place that we have. They have the wetlands over there. The wetlands is just not on one side of the creek typically. Normally it's on both sides of the creek. The Riparian Buffers are on both sides of the creek. So with, uh, with that said, I, I think we, we've got a rezoning request that kind of just is in harmony with a plat that was approved already and it may be a little even, um, you know, allow for a, a development without going through the cluster process. Uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Baldwin? Seen none. The, anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any other registered speakers to speak in favor of this item. And I'm looking in the public input mailbox and we have not received any messages in favor of this item.
All right, thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item and I am looking at the inbox and we have not received any messages in opposition either.
All right. So seen none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. No discussion amongst the council? All right, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. We'll move on now to item number 12, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is a request by PB Builders LLC to rezone a total of 9.873 acres located in the cobblestone subdivision at the terminus of Quail Drive from RA 20 to R six. And again, Mr. Sevier.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brad Sevier again with the planning staff. Um, you can see on this general location map that the project is located in the southwest quadrant of the city, uh, at the red star. Here's an aerial of the property, uh, you can see it's forested pretty heavily and just to the north, you see that cobblestone subdivision, uh, right there. Uh, here's a picture of the subject property. Again, it's, uh, pretty heavily, um, covered in, in trees and such. Uh, the survey indicates that the subject property is 9.873 acres in total. Uh, the existing land use is vacant, uh, it's still just wooded. Um, the subject property is not in the floodplain. It is however, in the Greens Mill Run watershed and if stormwater rules were to apply, it would be subject to 25-year, uh, detention as well as nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. Uh, there's. The, uh, request has the potential to generate, uh, over 500 trips per day, um, in this area and you can see it's located near the intersection of Allen Road and Dickinson Avenue. Uh, the current zoning classification of RA 20 could accommodate about 20 single-family residences, uh, right now. And if the request is granted, it could accommodate about 110 multifamily units and that's, uh, one, two and three-bedroom apartments. The future land use and character map shows this area as potential conservation open space. Uh, one thing that's important to keep in mind with this, um, character type is the word potential, um, and it's, it's a kind of a caution light, not a red light, uh, basically just indicates that you should look more into the, um, subject property. In the Horizon's 2026 plan, um, it talks about how the, they generate the potential conservation and open space designation is just through, um, you know, basically data sources that say maybe there's some environmentally sensitive features here, but it's not saying there are for sure environmentally sensitive features here. It just means take a look before you, you move forward. And this area has been developed, uh, you can see the portion, portion of cobblestone just to the north of this property is also in that potential conservation and open space designation and, um, the area, uh, is, is fine for development. So, uh, you can see the, the surrounding character type of the high-density residential, which does conform to the request, um, is, is what's found to be appropriate for this area, um, when it's not got that, that caution sign on it. So we, we've been moving forward with that high-density residential, um, in mind. Staff believes that the request is in compliance with the Horizon's 2026, uh, future land use plan as well as the future land use and character map. And so we recommend approval for this request and also the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve, recommend approval of this request at its August 2020 meeting, or, or yeah, August 20, 2020 meeting. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sevier? Seen none, the public hearing is now open, those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
First speaker that we have for this item is Mr. Mike Baldwin.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Mike Baldwin and I represent PB Builders. Again, Brad has done an excellent job of describing this, this property. It is, um, on the south end of cobblestone, uh, subdivision, which is a duplex subdivision. Uh, our client tonight is PB Builders, uh, represents, they hadn't given me the, the liberty to say their name, but it's, uh, two local, uh, um, native people from, uh, Pitt County. And, um, it does, uh, it is in line with the land use character map. Eventually what you would see is, uh, an extension of Quail Drive extending through the middle of it to the Edward U. Clark to provide interconnectivity to, to eventually dump out on, um, Dickinson Avenue. Um, the, uh, the land, uh, because of the soil types, uh, as, uh, Brad said, the, the caution light about possible wetlands, we already have had land management, our environmental group that we use out of Wilmington, North Carolina, they've come up here and, um, walked the entire site, checked the soils and, uh, have given us a pass that there are no, uh, no wetlands on the site. So, um, we, uh, we yielded to the yellow, so it looks like hopefully with approval, we'll get to go through the green now. Um, with that said, I, I think this one's pretty cut and dry, but I'll, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
I, I will add that, um, um, Quail Drive is extended to the property and water, water sewer and storm drainage, the, the developer and the engineer, uh, you know, when they, that property to the north was developed, went ahead, so, uh, uh, we would just be tying into those, those utilities at that point. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Baldwin? All right, seen none. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers and I'm looking at our public input mailbox and we do not have any messages in favor.
All right, thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item and looking at the inbox, we do not have any messages in opposition either.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. Seen no discussion, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit a comment. Madam Manager, item number 13?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is an ordinance requested by Stark Holding LLC and Trade Holding LLC to rezone a total of 5.756 acres located between West 10th Street and West 8th Street and west of South Washington Street from downtown Commercial Fringe and IU to CD. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sevier.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brad Sevier with planning staff again. Uh, you can see on the general location map, uh, where the red star is located, that this project is located right in the city center, uh, right in the downtown area. Uh, the aerial map, uh, you can see here, there's already a couple of buildings on the property. Uh, here's some pictures of some of the subject properties. It's a pretty spread out project, so you don't see all of it, but, um, this is just some of what's already on site. Uh, the survey indicates that the property is 5.756 acres in total. Uh, the existing land use, uh, is pretty variable. Um, there's some warehouse space on there, there's some retail space on there, there's some office space on there and a few of the, uh, properties involved are, uh, currently vacant as well. Um, the property is not in the floodplain, uh, it is however, in the Town Creek Culvert watershed and it would require, um, if stormwater rules were to apply, it would require, uh, 10-year detention for the project. The project has the capacity, the potential to generate a little over, uh, 4,000 additional trips per day when compared to the, um, existing zoning classification. The property is, is currently zoned IU and CDF and, uh, right now on site, there's about 150,000 square feet of warehouse space, about 10,000 square feet of retail space and then, uh, somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet of commercial, of, uh, of office space, um, currently on the property. Um, and if the rezoning request was granted, you could see, um, a reconfiguration of that space in a, in a lot of ways because the requested zoning of, um, CD, the downtown commercial is, is pretty flexible. Um, you might see an assembly space, some type of convention space, uh, 20,000 square feet of that. Uh, maybe you could see a hotel, 60 to 80 rooms down here. Uh, you might, uh, be looking at something around 20,000 square feet of, um, restaurant space, maybe some multifamily, 40 or 50 units, something in that range. Uh, really, there's a lot of possibilities and a lot of potential configurations, uh, for this, uh, request. Uh, the future land use and character map shows this to be uptown edge and uptown edge, uh, character type, um, is a pretty broad, uh, commercial, um, character type. It's supposed to complement our, uh, uptown core, uh, character type where we have our most intense commercial uses and, uh, really the, the uptown area is growing out in this direction with all of the activity along Dickinson Avenue. Um, so it's a very, um, appropriate area for, uh, intense commercial style development. Uh, the request is in compliance with the Horizon's 2026 future land use plan as well as the, uh, future land use and character map, so staff recommends approval of the request as submitted. And at their, um, most recent meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve the request and that was on August 20th. And I would be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sevier? All right, seen none, the public hearing is now open, those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first registered speaker in favor of this item is Mr. Brian Fagundes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Brian Fagundes, uh, representing Stark Holdings and Trade Holding Company. Uh, Mr. Sevier, I think, covered just about everything I would, would say to you guys. Uh, this property or these properties, I should say, really are kind of in the heart of, of a, an area that's in somewhat of a revitalization mode, really centered between 10th Street and, and 8th Street and Dickinson on the west and Evans on the east. Uh, the request is in compliance with the Horizon's plan. Planning and Zoning Commission last month voted unanimously to approve it. Uh, if you guys have any questions of me that I can answer that, that Mr. Sevier did not cover, I'm glad to try to answer those.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Fagundes? Seen none, thank you very much. Anyone else, anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional. Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional speakers in favor of this item, and looking at the public input inbox, we haven't received any messages in favor either.
All right, thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and looking at the inbox, we haven't received any messages in opposition.
Great, thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. All right, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the city council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll move on to item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance requested by Langston Farms LLC to amend the future land use and character map for 1.881 acres from office institutional to commercial for the property located at the northeastern corner of the intersection of South Memorial Drive and Regency Boulevard. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Sevier, I believe. No, Shante's on mute?
I'm going to be doing this one.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm going to share my screen with you.
Good evening.
Okay. This property is located in the southern section of the city. It's specifically located at the intersection of South Memorial Drive and Regency Boulevard. To the north, you have Sonic. To the south, this is Walmart. The property, again, is about 1.8 acres. Currently, the property is zoned office, and under the, the office zoning, there could be 5,000 square feet of office space. Under the requested designation for commercial, staff would expect 1,500, 1,500 square feet, possibly, of restaurant space. This land use plan, again, would be an anticipation of a rezoning request, a net increase of 689 trips per day could be generated. Currently, this corner is shown as office and institutional. It also is shown on the east side of Memorial as you travel north. There is a stubout, it's a little hard to see, but under the aerial, you'll see there's actually a stubout that's going to connect this lot with the Sonic parking lot. This rezoning, or the, the requested land use plan is in keeping with the rest of the land use, land use patterns throughout the city. In staff's opinion, you know, we recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval at their August meeting, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first speaker that we have in favor of this request is Mr. Mike Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members again. I'm Mike Baldwin, and I represent Langston Farms LLC. That is Ms. Mary Virginia Langston. Her, her father was Cedric Don Langston, if you know of the Bank of Winterville. He was the president of the Bank of Winterville back a long time ago. And she owns a lot of property in Pitt County. She sold a lot of it. All the property that, in, combined with this, across the road where Planet Fitness is, she owned, she owned all the way to the railroad tracks in this farm, where you have West Haven and some other offices as well. So, but anyway, I went out to Memorial Drive and went all the way down to Sam's Club, the stoplight just beyond the Sam's Club, and made a U-turn, and started at Fred's, Fred's Foods. And I went 2.3 miles to, which was, put me at the north side of the Parker's Barbecue Site Restaurant. And everything except one office building and one house, the office building was at the entrance into Club Pines across from the parking lot at Greenville Toyota, and the house was right beside the Walmart Neighborhood Supermarket. Everything else was built out as commercial. So I think it kind of speaks for itself, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Baldwin? Seeing none, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers for this item, and I'm looking in the inbox, I don't see any messages submitted in favor of it either.
All right, thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and looking at the inbox, I don't see any messages in opposition.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. All right, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. We'll now move on to item number 15. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the city code by creating a use classification and associated standards for small private schools. And we'll have both chief planner, Shante Gooby, as well as planner two, Brad Sevier, for that presentation. And I believe I'm going to give it to Ms. Gooby to start with. Awesome.
Yes, that's correct. I'm going to go through just a little bit of a text amendment, what it means, and then the history of this request, and then I'm going to switch over my slides, and I'm going to let Brad jump in. So I'm going to go ahead and get to my slides first. I want to give you just a brief overview of the process, and again, along with the history with this specific amendment. Text amendments are when we make amendments to the city zoning ordinance. Typically, that would be when a person or an entity would like to make a change to the city's zoning ordinance. I'm going to shoot back one slide, I'm sorry. And typically, they would approach city staff about the change, and city staff would sponsor the amendment, help to craft the amendment to make it more suitable citywide. An example that we had, I guess, maybe almost two years ago, was we had someone who wanted to do pet grooming, and they wanted to do pet grooming as a standalone use. They came to speak to staff, again, they wanted to do it as a use, and they only wanted to really do it in one zoning district. Staff ended up taking over that text amendment. We added additional zoning districts, and we also added some more conditions with that use as well. As with all text amendments, they go before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation, and then they come to city council for a final decision. Since text amendments are citywide, the only notifications that we are required to do would be the notice in the Daily Reflector, the city page, and then on the city's website. So now, if we get into the history of this specific request, the John Paul Catholic School was granted a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment in 2015. In 2018, that special use permit was amended. The school asked to include the athletic fields. That special use permit was approved, and the athletic fields were built. After receiving some concerns from the neighbors, in September of last year, the city hosted a meeting between JP2 reps and the neighborhood. At that time, there were concerns with the lights that had just been installed on the athletic fields, and then also the sounds emanating from the games that were occurring. So the city hosted, or again, city hosted that meeting. Subsequently, there was a rezoning request that was submitted and was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission in January of this year. The applicant, Rich Ballot, who again is representative of JP2, was requesting the rezoning so that the school could operate as a permitted use and not operate under the special use permit. And the two reasons were the expansion of the cafeteria, which, because it was expanding, would have required to go back in front of the Board of Adjustment, and then also to allow third-party usage. At, at the January 21st meeting, staff recommended denial of the rezoning request, because the requested zoning wasn't in compliance with Horizon's and the Future Land Use Plan map. And the neighborhood had concerns with the potential uses in that requested zoning district. And they also had some concerns, again, with the current operating conditions of the school. So at that meeting, the P&amp;Z commissioners made a motion for staff to work with the neighborhood and with JP2 for a solution in lieu of the rezoning request. At that particular juncture, there were two possible options that, that were available. One was the special use permit, could go back to the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment would be asked if they could expand the cafeteria, and also to be allowed to use third-party usage that was not currently allowed. And then the second option was a text amendment. Mr. Ballot was not willing to go back before the Board of Adjustment to ask to amend the special use permit, because it was a possibility that the other conditions of the permit could be amended or deleted. So again, that left a text amendment as the only option. So since that time up until now, there has been a public hearing that was held in May for the text amendment. It was also continued in June and July. The city sponsored some public engagements. There's been various drafts that have been put out for, for review. City staff has answered 42 written questions and put those responses on the city's page. We've also had phone calls, emails, and discussion with city staff, individuals, JP2 representatives. So the next couple of slides are just more specifications on the dates and what happened with those. So May 5th, Mr. Ballot held a Zoom meeting with the neighborhood and invited staff to attend about the draft text amendment. Staff did a presentation on the text amendment and answered questions. The text amendment then went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 19th. A public hearing was held. The neighborhood asked for more time to work with staff. So P&amp;Z, again, continued the item till June. In June 19th, staff had a Zoom meeting with a small group of the homeowners to discuss the text amendment. The homeowners had established this small group of the neighborhoods, which were Planters Walk, Planters Trail, and Quail Ridge, to work directly with Mr. Ballot. The group had already met with Mr. Ballot and had some questions for staff. Then June 11th, staff met via Zoom with two homeowners to discuss the special use permit. June 16th, the Planning and Zoning Commission had their meeting, and staff asked the commission to continue the, to continue the item so that all parties could continue to work together and for it to be continued until July. And then in June, staff and city attorney McGirt had a phone, a phone conference with Tom Feller, again, one of the homeowners, to discuss the special use permit and the text amendment. June 30th, staff held an in-person meeting at City Hall to discuss the text amendment. We had approximately seven people to attend, including Mr. Ballot. The neighborhoods requested staff to hold an additional meeting via Zoom, because many people didn't want to attend the in-person meeting due to COVID. So June 16th, staff held a follow-up meeting for Zoom meeting, and approximately 16 people attended that meeting. The item went back before the commission on July 21st, and again, staff asked to continue the item so that all the, so all parties could continue to work together. June 20th, Mr. Ballot held a meeting on, or held an onsite test for the sound and the lights with the neighborhood. Staff was not present at that meeting. This request, again, came back in front of the P&amp;Z Commission on August 18th, and at that time, it was recommended an approval for five to three. During this time, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, staff was fielding questions, we were holding meetings, we were even having small discussions one-on-one with some of the homeowners. Also, as part of these P&amp;Z commission meetings that we held, every time this item, when this item went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff mailed 500-plus letters each time. We also posted a sign on site notifying all the different interested parties, whether they be homeowners, or perhaps tenants in the neighborhood, or even folks that their children attended school. We also posted a sign about the text amendment. And then, as late as yesterday afternoon, staff held another in-person meeting with Rich Ballot and three of, three homeowners who were representatives of the neighborhood. They told us that they represented a larger, a larger group of the neighborhood. That was Tom Feller, Brett Kuiper, and Albie, Albie McLawhorn. So during that meeting, it was approximately an hour long. All three sides, if you will, the city, Mr. Ballot, and the neighborhood, met to compromise on the existing text amendment that came before you, and to, again, try to craft some more beneficial conditions for the neighborhood. And so, a little bit further down in the presentation, we're going to talk about those changes that actually came out of that meeting yesterday at lunchtime. And then the other thing, this is my last slide, and then I'll turn it over to Brad. This is a snippet of the planning division's website, and we posted all the Q and A's that we received, we posted those to the website. We had to break them up in four different parts, because there were a lot of questions, so those were posted. We have, during the different versions of the text amendment, it has been put on our website, so anyone could review it. The version for this, for the September meeting was posted, and then as of yesterday, with those changes, the revised version has been posted on our website sent today. And of course, these changes are all going to stay there up until you reconvene again on Monday. So it'll be there for anyone to continue to review any of those changes. And with that, I will turn it over to Brad, and I will let him share his slides, so he can pick up where I left off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Brad Sevier with the planning staff. So just to, following on, just to kind of introduce the topic a little bit. We've created a definition which will, will change what the property is classified as with our zoning ordinance. And so the rules we're talking about will apply not only to this project, to the, you know, to the John Paul School, but also any property that meets this description that has developed in the future. And so basically, if you're a private school and you have 500 or less students, you will fall under the regulations that we're talking about. So this isn't, you know, a lot of the, the issues around this project are very specific to the John Paul School, but it doesn't just apply to them, applies to anything that meets this definition. Here's the proposed amendment. I won't go through each and every single line with you. The changes that have been made since the last time, since this was submitted to council last, last week or so, are highlighted. When we do markups like this, when we're removing words, we strike through them, and when we're adding words, we underline them. when we're adding words, we underline them. So for instance, here on line 29, one of the changes that we're making from the original proposal and what went to Planning and Zoning Commission, or what we're hoping to make, is that the third-party occurrences are changing from once, one allowed per week to one allowed per month. And when I say that, I mean, third-party occurrences where they're using the sound and light systems like the school would be able to do so. You can see we've made a few changes through this process, and I just want to go through the differences between the special use permit and the text amendment, the special use permit that applies to John Paul II school right now. This first slide, it's dealing with things that are basically one-to-one exchanges. They may be phrased slightly differently, but their impact and meaning are the same. So you see site plan approval is required with both the, the school and the athletic complex. They have to be associated with each other, and what that means is that the athletic fields can't operate separately from the school. They have to be operating under the school. They are the subordinate, the accessory used to the school. So, so no one will be able to sell that off and just operate it as, you know, a full-time third-party athletic complex type deal. There's restrictions on placing parking areas and driveways along the perimeter of the site, and the parking standards broadly comply with the standards for high schools and recreational fields, that sort of thing. When it comes to lights, there's several ways that the special use permit addressed it, and there's some ways that it didn't address it. We attempted to preserve what was addressed and, and to address what was not. So in the special use permit, for instance, it says, "Light shall not be a nuisance or a hazard." And in the text amendment, we've gotten very specific with what constitutes the nuisance or a hazard. And in this case, we've stated .5-foot candles along the property line would constitute a nuisance or a hazard, and that is in line with other city policy regarding lighting. The special use permit said the light cone will not encroach onto the surrounding property, and we have provisions about light fixtures having glare control and directional LEDs and being directed towards playing fields and surfaces so that they're not spilling out directly onto surrounding properties. And in the special use permit, while it said that light couldn't pose a nuisance, it didn't talk about how that would be and how you would measure that. So we've proposed very specific methods by which the levels of light can be measured to make sure that they will conform and fall within the standard .5-foot candles that we specified. And of course, there are some, some larger differences. The main one being, in the special use permit, it states that there will be no third-party usage of athletic facilities. And I apologize, forgot to update this slide, but we, we've, in our new, in our original proposal, we had talked about going with a one-use of light and sound per week for third parties and then otherwise unlimited use. But in our updated proposal that we came up with at the, the meeting yesterday, we are talking about allowing one use of the light and sound in the way that the school does per month. So that's going from 52 instances down to 12 instances per year. In the special use permit, it just blanket says, "No outdoor amplified sound not associated with sporting events." And for the text amendment, we have added in hours of operation. So before the school could operate at any time that they desired, as long as they scheduled an event, they could, you know, they could, they could run it to midnight or two in the morning or whatever they felt like doing it, as long as it was on a schedule, that was okay. We've added in specific hours of operation. Those are from 9:30 to, 9:30 Monday through Thursday, and then 9:30 to 11:00 on Friday and Saturday, then from 9:30 till 5:00 PM on Sunday. So the total amount of time that these, the light and sound equipment could be running has been drastically curtailed from what it was under the special use permit. And then for the special use permit, there was also no sound limit for athletic events. The city noise ordinance is pretty broad and permissive when it comes to athletic events. Basically, they don't regulate them. They, they, there's a specific exemption for them. And in the text amendment, we have limited that to 75 decibels for scheduled events, for athletic events. And that would apply for the school, and it would apply for third parties going above 60 decibels for their one-per-month time usage. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted five to three to approve the request, and that was again on August 20th. Just to go through, you know, the few points of the compromise agreement, when we sat down the other day, everybody agreed to permit the use of the sound system by all parties during the hours of operation, of course, as long as it was limited to 60 decibels. And the reason for this is that that is a conversational level of noise. So if you're sitting across the table from me and we're talking to each other, we're going to be generating about that level of sound. And so it didn't seem unreasonable that if someone wanted to play, you know, music very quietly through the PA system in a manner that wouldn't be a nuisance, that that would be accommodated. So we've added that into the, the proposed changes. And then we've agreed, and some of this was already in there, but we just reaffirmed the agreement that the school would have unlimited use of the sound and lights and the sound going up to 75 decibels within the hours of operation that I talked about previously, and that third parties may use the sound and lights once per month. With the same restrictions as the school, they'd basically be treated like the school once per month, except for the sound could only go to 9:00 PM in those cases. And then we've also agreed that all light and amplified sound must be off within one hour of the end of any event. That provision's also in there for the lighting systems. So these four main points were all agreed to by all parties at the meeting the other day, the representatives from the neighborhood, as well as Mr. Ballot and the city. And the proposed amendment has been updated to, to reflect that, and the draft is available on the website. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Gooby and Mr. Sevier. Are there any questions for our staff?
I have just one. On item one there, the 60-decibel level, as I understand it, that's essentially what is, is that's, that, that level lies sort of citywide, right? Just about anybody can go out in their backyard and cut on a stereo or a, you know, a band and hit 60 decibels, right? So that's not, operationally, that's, operationally, that's not really granting the, anybody in, the, the text amendment doesn't, isn't really granting anything to anybody there. That's a, that's, that exists in multiple other places in the city code, right?
That is preserving a right. So, so what you're talking about is found within a different section of the city code. That's our noise ordinance, and that does allow 60 decibels in a residential area. What this does is, because it's in Title IX instead of Title 12, it's a different regulatory framework, and the way that the text amendment was written previously, it would only allow one instance of use by a third party. What this does is it restores the ability for a third party to operate at a normal residential level of sound outside of that one instance of use. So it, it kind of preserves a, an expected sound level, quality-of-life situation in a residential neighborhood.
And in the absence of this text, that the, the amendment might be read to suggest that that was not allowed.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions for the staff? All right. Thank you both very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Connelly, the first speaker that we have in favor is Ms. Amanda Bambrick.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome, thanks. Well, I really appreciate the hard work that everybody has, has done on this and Shante and Bradley's presentations, probably better than, than anything I was going to put in front of you. So I'm not really going to dwell on the content here because Bradley just walked it through it so well. And I'm going to let Rich speak after me to sort of talk about his vision for the site. But as y'all know, I mean, the goal at the end of the day is to essentially expand this athletic facility use, sort of, you know, correct an issue from the original SUP and just essentially bring a nonprofit, you know, expansion, open, literally open these state-of-the-art facilities up to folks, other groups, sports groups, youth groups, as you have it across the, the city of Greenville. I was going to go through in great detail, just like Shante did, the schedule here, but what I think you're really seeing is, and I was actually looking through my emails, and it's been almost a year to the date when I got my first email about this project, back in September of 2019. We started chewing in February this year on a text amendment solution instead of a rezoning. It felt better. We knew there would be some challenges there because obviously we respect and understand that text amendments are generally, you know, they're citywide applicable, right? So it's not like you're dealing with specific projects. The city has been extremely thoughtful over the course of this, making sure that what we came up with was, was fair and balanced across the community. But, you know, we spent the spring and the summer doing, passing drafts and working together and additional meetings, which I'll discuss in just a second. And as you saw, you know, an amendment with additional sort of compromise positions, trying to make it more restrictive to give the neighbors as much comfort as possible moving forward. And y'all, I've been before you enough at this point. I think you know me well enough. I mean, neighbor support and neighbor outreach is important to me. And quite frankly, you know, over the course of my entire career, watching what Rich has done and also the town effort here has been pretty unprecedented in my experience, but, but the level of, of meetings and emails and calls and things that I've been privy to and have just received kind of records describing them from Rich, I mean, he really, it's, it's a top three in terms of neighbor outreach here for my entire career. So I think, you know, we commend Rich and also the city for, for their effort, you know, hosting these meetings and working with neighbors and, you know, looking at the, the ordinance kind of, you know, in a holistic capacity to come up with something that, that works for both the vision and the goal, but providing the protections for the neighbors. We had multiple neighbor meetings, sound-light meetings on-site, Zoom meetings. We're Zooming everywhere. We're Zooming here. You know, it's probably north of 200 man-hours alone with what Rich has done, and that's, you know, not including what I've been doing kind of behind the scenes. You're going to hear some support hopefully tonight, local sports, community leaders. We have had new signatures and support from multiple neighbors in multiple of these communities. And I think at the end of the day, what you're really going to see is you're getting a, a more robust regulation in some ways, and you're getting a more consistent regulation because instead of dealing with this on a case-by-case basis and in quasi-judicial fashion, you've got a well-thought-out, expanded ordinance that Bradley pulled in all these different components that weren't addressed, and you're going to have something that can be used, you know, if necessary, you know, moving forward. Yeah, at the end of the day, it's, it's a good neighbor. It's a good project. I feel like the engagement here has been pretty unprecedented. We understand, and I've said this to y'all before, you know, we know we can't please everybody. You probably will hear a handful of folks tonight who still oppose this, but I think the efforts to date, and if you really think about even, you know, as of yesterday and the past couple of days that I was hearing about in real time, I mean, the effort, the heart, the intent has all really been in the right place here. And I don't always get to say this at the end of a project, but I really feel like, you know, we're at a place where, you know, the process worked the way it was supposed to. You know, there was engagement from the city, there was engagement from Rich's side. We had multiple meetings, and we were willing to, to take delays. And, you know, it really did kind of produce a true compromise. And again, the best hallmark of a compromise is not everybody is 100% happy, but we feel like we have a, a project here and an amendment here that really kind of went through a textbook sort of land use method, and I'm proud to have been a, a part of that, and I'm hoping that y'all will support us on, I guess, Monday night. So thank you. I appreciate it. And I'm here with questions, and I know Rich, I think, should be next on the list.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Bambrick? Seeing none, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Connelly, the next registered speaker that we have is Mr. Rich Ballot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, fantastic. So, yeah, so look, when my wife and I first started this project, our vision was to really build a fantastic sports complex for JP two Catholic High School, and we, and we did just that. And after we built this, we had so many requests from third parties for use, whether it was local youth sports, whether it was charity events, including our Greenville Police Department, I believe, at one time, asked if they could host a charity event in our gymnasium. And, but part of the mission for a Catholic High School is to be supportive of the community, to help youth sports, to help charities, and that's really what we were doing here. But at the same time, we did want to work out a compromise with the neighbors because we do want to be good neighbors. We put additional limitations on ourselves, going from completely, you know, uncapped sound to 75 decibels for our events. And we put in not just a, a number, but we put in actual hardware equipment to prevent us from going above that level and, and did the sound and test. Hopefully, all of you saw the lights already and, and see how we really got those focused as well. But I really want to thank Albie McLaughlin, Tom and Brett, who we met with along with city staff prior this week and came up with that compromise. I was really glad when I asked for that meeting and staff was able to do it, and also that the, the representatives from the neighbor, particularly Albie and Tom and Brett, were able to get, along with the HOA's, support for this compromise, which I think is okay. And based on that, I'm going to take a good faith effort, and I'm going to limit my speaking tonight. I'm also going to ask all of our supporters to abbreviate their speaking tonight, and I'm hoping the other side will follow through with the compromise spirit and do the same, you know, as, as they've committed to the compromise and to supporting it based on that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to yield my time and again, ask the, the rest of my supporters to please speak shorter. And also, I will say, Father Ian is probably not going to be on tonight. He had to have a call with the bishop since this went a little bit later than he expected. So when you get to him, he probably won't be available.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Ballot. Any questions for Mr. Ballot? All right. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person, excuse me, you have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Ms. Gray Walkman.
Good evening, everyone. Can y'all hear me?
We can.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Connelly, and council members for having me this evening. I've missed everyone, and I hope everyone's staying safe during this time. My name is Gray Williams. I'm the current executive director of the Greenville-Pitt County Sports Commission. I'm here this evening in full support of agenda item number 15, discussing outside rentals for the John Paul II Catholic High School. As you all are aware, sports have been drastically hit by the COVID-19 crisis. As we begin to rebuild sports tourism, we need to link arms with public and private partners. This is an example of someone in our community helping privately fill a void of more facilities for tournament and community use. Having this facility to recruit outside tournaments will be a tremendous asset to the Greenville and Pitt County. This will open new doors for us at the Sports Commission. Three large concepts I would like to emphasize are, one, expanding existing tournaments that currently, that we currently have, two, diversifying our portfolio of sports we can recruit, and three, growing economic impact for our city and in turn, reducing tax dollars. Last year alone, tourism saved the average taxpayer $110 a year. Touching on the first concept, an example of an existing tournament that we could expand is USA Lacrosse hosts an annual tournament at North Rec Complex. This tournament currently brings around 3,000 athletes for a weekend. By adding JP two's new turf fields, we will elevate the caliber of tournaments we currently are hosting. Utilizing these fields for championship and finals games will set us apart from our competitors. In the world of sports, turf is the best of the best. Adding this multi-use field to our inventory will put us in a playing level with larger sports destinations. A second example of expanding existing tournaments, as you all are aware of our beautiful new beach volleyball facility we have, by adding JP two's new beach volleyball courts to our inventory, we will be able to expand a 30-team tournament to a 50- to 60-team tournament. This also gives players not one, but two brand-new facilities and highly increases the chances of winning and expanding these tournaments. To touch on the second concept, with support of having outside rentals at this facility, we can diversify our inventory of sports being recruited. In the past, we have been approached by North Carolina Independent School Athletic Association, which is the conference JP two currently sits in, to host regional and championship tournaments. Having access to this 23-acre athletic campus would set us apart when placing bids to host regional and state tournaments. When running numbers this week- and state tournaments. When running numbers this week, a conservative estimate of hosting an annual regional football tournament will bring an estimated, an estimated half a million dollars within three years. Football tournaments would also be a completely new sports for us at the Sports Commission to begin recruiting. Lastly, I don't want to leave out the macro impact of this facility. With every one of these tournaments...
It's time.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Walkman.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Walkman? Seeing none. All right. Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker that we have is Ms. Maggie Geiger.
Hello. Can y'all hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Maggie Geiger, and I am the overall Student Government Association President at John Paul II Catholic High School. As a student who is currently enrolled in AP Government and Politics, it's an honor for me to be with you tonight to represent my fellow classmates in support of this text amendment. In May, I will graduate with 14 years of Catholic education from St. Peter Catholic School and JP two. And part of the mission of the Catholic Church and its schools is to share our resources with our communities. Catholic schools instill this in students through community service projects, like days we have set aside during the school year, where students either clean our adopted section of 14th Street, volunteer at the food bank, or a homeless shelter. And then we also have days outside of school, like one time, we had a group of students go up to the New Bern area to help some families clean up after hurricane. And each year, our school chooses a theme based on scripture that serves to unite and guide all our actions. The theme for this year is Love and Truth. And it's based on 1 John, Chapter 3, verses 17 and 18. Quote, "If someone who has worldly means seeks a brother in need and refuses him compassion, how can the love of God remain in him? Children, let us love, not in word or speech, but indeed in truth," end quote. When I read this scripture, I'm reminded of the saying, "To whom much is given, much is expected." The Ballot family has been extremely generous to provide our school and my classmates with an athletic campus unlike any other in the eastern part of our state. Last year, our principal was approached by Fire and Rescue Emergency Services to use our gym for a fundraiser. He had to say no, because that type of third party use is currently not allowed. Having the ability to share our facilities with others for the betterment of our community is not only the right thing to do, but it's also part of our mission and an example of putting this year's theme into action. So in closing, I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Mr. Ballot and his family for all they have done for our school. I know they don't expect anything in return, and I'm pretty sure they wouldn't want me to use part of my three minutes to say this, but I hope they know how much we truly appreciate it. And finally, I hope that all of you will vote in favor of this text amendment, which will allow our school to share their generosity with others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geiger. There any questions for Ms. Geiger? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Sean Murphy.
Yes, my name is Sean Murphy. I'm the Athletic Director at John Paul II. Before starting, I just wanted to personally thank Mayor Conley and the City Council for allowing me to speak this evening. Also appreciate all your hard work and effort here in the city of Greenville. I'm relatively new to the area, and it's been really a pleasure being a part of this community. I did want to make some comments supporting this text amendment. And also, I want to make myself available in case there are questions, concerns regarding our athletic program, the complex at JP two. As Maggie just stated, you know, being a Catholic school, our mission is to reach out and serve the community. And our kids do do a great job through volunteer work, city, city road cleanup. They work as classroom mentors, they work in the youth programs. And I think another way that we can really serve the community is by opening our doors to the Greenville community. You know, we've got a great athletic complex. And, you know, we're very fortunate that the Ballots allowed us this opportunity. And as Maggie stated, we want to share it with the community. That's part of our mission as a Catholic school. I had worked for 22 years at an inner city Catholic school in Baltimore. And again, that was our mission. We opened up our campus. We were one of the few schools in Baltimore City that had a turf field. And we wanted to make sure the community had an opportunity to use it. I think for you guys that know that have, maybe have children that play youth sports, sometimes it's very difficult to find a quality field, especially if there's inclement weather. You know what can happen to the field conditions, game cancellation. With our turf field, that's never gonna happen. That would be available to the kids. I think what it does too is it allows kids the opportunity to play on a surface that they would maybe see on a college campus. And again, you know, you think about, you know, I had a chance to work with some of the underprivileged, some underprivileged kids at one of the youth programs. And, you know, those kids, you know, would be so excited to have that chance to play on the field. And I think what it would do is just bringing them on our campus, you know, it might keep them more engaged in sports, more active in sports. It might motivate them to continue to work hard in the classroom just by being around our, our school community. So again, I'm appreciative of this opportunity to speak. I hope the, you know, the amendment will pass. I certainly want to thank the Ballot family. They've done a great job. And as we said, we want to share this. We want our doors to be open, and we don't want to isolate from the community. So again, I thank you. And hopefully I was quick enough.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions for Mr. Murphy? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Mr. Scott Kesters.
I'm walking to my car.
Yes, can you hear me?
I'm walking to my car, just dialing the phone with you.
Yes.
Are you able to hear me? Sorry.
We're good.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Scott Kesters. I have a sophomore who is a, who goes to John Paul II Catholic High School. I'm also a member of St. Peter Catholic Church in Greenville, which is closely linked to the high school. You know, a lot of what I wanted to comment on has already been mentioned. You know, we have these first-class facilities that would be great resources for youth sports, charitable endeavors, and any other groups looking for, for high-quality facilities to use here in Greenville. And, you know, it is our mission as a Catholic church and Catholic community to share our resources and good fortune with communities where we live, work, and go to school. And this text amendment would allow us to do so. I also would say that part of our mission as a Catholic community is to be a good neighbor. And I think, you know, it's been well documented and discussed in this meeting that there's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of collaboration, a lot of discussion, and a lot of compromise with the surrounding neighborhoods on their concerns. And a lot of those concerns have been, have been met. And, and I think that, that is in, in keeping with our mission as a Catholic community, to be a good neighbor in our community. So for these reasons, I believe it's the right move to approve the text amendment, you know, to allow the school and the community to realize the benefits of having a great facility like JP two in Greenville. So thank you all for giving me a few moments to speak.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kesters. Any questions for Mr. Kesters? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Those, anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker is Jaren Brown.
Jaren Brown speaking. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm gonna be really quick. I coach a lot of youth sports here in Pitt County, you know, Little League Baseball, middle school basketball, and football. And the thing that we run into a lot is not having facility for, for practices and, you know, in the play game. So this is phenomenal that JP two's willing to allow us to use that facility to have the kids somewhere to go to. So it's a phenomenal effort from them. So as a, as a coach that volunteers a lot of time, it would be great to have another facility to practice and to be able to play at. So that's, that's my input. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions for Mr. Brown? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker is Ms. Rhonda Billingsley.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Conley and City Council. I am speaking today in full support of the text amendment. And really, all I can say is wow, because a lot of what has already been said, I, I completely echo it. And I'll be very brief. There are two areas that are just near and dear to me regarding this text amendment and the reason why it has my full support. I'm, I'm so thrilled that all three parties were able to reach an agreement. The first area is, I have a daughter at JP two. She's a freshman at JP two, and I'm very proud that she attends a school, and not only a school, but a community that cares about outreach. I've had my eye on JP two for quite a while, since the mid 2000s, and wanted my oldest daughter to attend JP two when they were initially having classes over at St. Gabriel's Catholic Church, but couldn't seem to get her to make a switch. But in talking to the youngest daughter and being able to do that, I'm very thrilled that she's a part of the community. That, everyone who has spoken, you know, the young lady who spoke so eloquently, Maggie, and everyone else after her, after her, are absolutely right about the Catholic Church's mission. So that's the second point I want to hit on. The Catholic Church's mission is really about being inclusive with the community and really sharing resources. I've had experience in various communities with my oldest daughter being Catholic educated and, and understanding that mission. But something that's near and dear to me, I was a Girl Scout leader at St. Gabriel's Catholic Church for nearly 12 years here in town. And I remember before I started the troop, the father there at the time said that he would only allow me to have my, my, my troop meetings at St. Gabriel's if I opened up the troop, if the Girl Scouts would ensure that I opened up my troop to 50% of the girls being non-Catholic and from the community. And he said that was very important from the standpoint of being inclusive and sharing the very nice and elaborate facility so we could have multiple classrooms and, you know, have a place if we wanted to even do a cooking badge, we would have a full kitchen. So that was very important. I was just absolutely blown away. And that certainly motivated me even more to want to have my, my meetings there. And when I think about today and what Rich Ballot and all the leaders at JP two are doing is certainly in keeping with the Catholic faith, their mission, and something that's gonna be absolutely great for the community. So
Ms. Billingsley? Ms. Billingsley? I believe so, but her time was running out, so.
Thank you, Ms. Billingsley. We appreciate it. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes, possibly. Do we have time left?
We have got about seven minutes left.
Okay.
Mayor Conley. So we do have a couple more speakers on the list. Troy Lofton.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hi, my name is Troy Lofton. Thank you, Mayor Conley and the council members for allowing me to come before you this afternoon. I represent a local youth football team here, Pitt Lightning, Pitt Lightning. And we actually have worked very closely with Ms. Rose Glover and Ms. Monica Daniels in helping our team really do some great things in representing our community abroad. And, and so I want to just talk about how the facilities there and give some examples and, and just to kind of give you an example of, of what we have to go through, because we don't have these facilities in our area. Our team, with the help of the great ladies that I just mentioned, we were able to take our team to compete not only in Virginia, but also in Ohio at the Pro Football Hall of Fame game. And so that was a lot of effort from outside donations, contributions. And, but all in all, you know, our team organization, we raised about $10,000 to make that happen. And unfortunately, that's something that, you know, we just can't do every year. But we do want our kids to have that experience and as well as that opportunity. And when we go to these places, we see the turf fields, we see the facilities and things that we're, our parents who are really financially strapped a lot of times, but they're making these sacrifices so that their kids can partake into something that they feel is a great opportunity. So having us, the, having the ability to do and take advantage of these opportunities locally, right here in our own community, where now our parents are able to actually spend that money in our communities, but then also recoup some of those savings would mean a lot, not only for our, our organization, but for our kids and our parents and the like. So we're excited and delighted and hopefully praying that you guys will approve the use of the John Paul facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lofton. Any questions for Mr. Lofton? Seeing none. All right. Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
And I think Mr. Ballot had mentioned him earlier, but I'm just gonna call Father Ian just in case. If he's in room, Father Ian, you have three minutes? Yeah, we, I can double check, but I don't think we see him here. Let me just... Mayor Conley, I don't see him in the room.
All right. Do we have any other speakers that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
We do not have any additional registered speakers, and I am looking right now in the public input inbox. And I don't see any messages in support.
All right. Thank you very much. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Let me just set the timer here. Okay. First speaker that we have in opposition is Mr. Thomas Feller.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Feller, Jr., and I'm a resident of one of the adjacent neighborhoods of JP two. My backyard lies probably 50 feet from the athletic complex fence. And I've been involved as a neighborhood representative on this issue since some of the very first conversations. And I'll just, I'll just say, it's certainly been an interesting road. And since our conversation yesterday, I've been trying to figure out exactly what to say tonight. And I'll just, I'll keep this short. And I'll say, I believe that, you know, the changes you've, that have been presented here tonight by Brad are a significant improvement from the original amendment that was submitted to you. I also believe they're a step in the right direction. And they are certainly what we agreed to yesterday when we sat down with Rich and the city staff. So as such, I want to start by saying thank to, thank you to Rich and to the city staff for meeting with us yesterday to bring about this compromise and listening and just, just talking with us. So, you know, in the spirit of compromise and goodwill, and as I committed to yesterday, I'm withdrawing my opposition at this point. And I'm hopeful the compromise represents a turn for a better in the relationship between us as neighbors and the school.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Feller. Are there any questions for Mr. Feller? Seeing none. All right. Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker that we have is Ms. Donna Jacobs.
Good evening. I am Donna Jacobs, and I am a resident in Planters Walk. I know there's been a lot of discussion back and forth on this issue, and there's been compromise by both parties. After seeing the most recent compromise agreement tonight, I feel like I can live with this latest version. So I'm not gonna spend any more time making the comments I had originally planned. But I do appreciate all the time and the effort that everyone has spent on this. And I'll just save time for some other speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Are there any questions for Ms. Jacobs? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker we have is Mr. Brett, I think it's Kiper.
Kiper. Dr. Brett Kiper.
Sorry about that. Dr. Kiper, are, are you present?
Yes. Am I unmuted?
Yes. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I apologize. I thought I was unmuted. Good evening. I'm Brett Kiper. Thank you to Mayor Conley and to the council for hearing our comments. As Mr. Ballard mentioned, I was part of the contingency that met with him yesterday and with city officials to sort of discuss this compromise. And first of all, let me express my appreciation to Mr. Ballard and to Mr. Sevior and the other city planners present in helping us to craft a compromise. I appreciate that Mr. Ballard has been flexible with these stipulations. And so, you know, I too am content that we have reached a good compromise. And I will say that as one of the neighbors, I live in Planters Trail, directly behind the bleachers of the football stadium, that we really do want to see a good use of the facility. And, you know, third-party use is probably part of that. And working out a way to do that is what's most important. I did want to mention that as I presented this to some of my neighbors, it was pointed out that there's a potential contradiction in this, in this latest version that perhaps needs to the city council's attention. And that has to do with stipulation number 12, which is one of the new stipulations. I didn't notice it myself, but one of my neighbors did. It states that there should be no restriction on amplified sound that produces 60 decibels or less. My concern is whether that comes into contradiction with stipulation eight. And stipulation eight has also been revised. The second sentence there says, "Operation of sound and light components of the outdoor facilities by entities other than the associated school will be limited to one occurrence per month." It goes on to say that the occurrence means a third-party use of either lights or amplified sound or both. So I see a potential conflict between those two. My proposal, although there is some discussion with Mr. Sevior about this, my proposal is that if the current city noise provisions already limit normal use of property at 60 decibels, perhaps stipulation number 12 was not necessary. And Mr. Sevior pointed out tonight that after this text amendment that this might be subject to a different title number. I'm not familiar with those stipulations. In any case, it appears to me that in point number 12, there's the advocacy, ad-vocation of third parties using the public address system or an amplified sound system on more instances than are allowed by stipulation number eight. So I'll just leave that as a situation. I do say that, you know, in our-
Is that time?
In our conversations with Mr. Ballard and the city, that we were very glad for this compromise, and, you know, we certainly want to see this text amendment go forward.
Thank you, Dr. Kiper. Any questions for Dr. Kiper? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
I would just like to note that the next registered speaker is David Wilson Okomira, but he has submitted an email earlier today withdrawing his name from the list.
Okay.
So the next speaker that we have is John Reich.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is John Reich. I've been a resident of Greenville for over 17 years. I live in Planters Walk, and I am right behind the football field. I'm about 220 feet of property adjacent to the field. I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Ballard and the representatives of the homeowners to reach a reasonable compromise, which resulted in the most recent draft of the text amendment. You know from letters and newspaper editorials that primary issue has been third-party use of JP2's outdoor athletic fields with lights and sound. Allowing that type of third-party use once per month is much more palatable than was previously written. As a result, while I still think there is room for improvement in terms of third-party usage and the allowable noise levels, I can support the draft that was distributed earlier today. I sincerely hope that the school will remain cognizant of the neighbors and will work out any future problems if they occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reich. Any questions for Mr. Reich? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker is Ann Dickerson.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Ann Dickerson. I've lived in Greenville 26 years. And I'd like to say that the neighbors always was supportive of people using the field, the house. It was the lights and sound that was very disturbing to our neighborhood. I'm going to just say thank you all for thinking, for the amendments that were made yesterday, and I would support John Reich, what he said. I think it is palpable, and I really appreciate the work that has gone through with Brett Alby and Tom on the work and Mr. Ballard and the staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dickerson. Any questions for Dr. Dickerson? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker is Joni Torres.
Oh, thanks. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This current version of the text amendment, while it's not perfect, because it is a compromise between the two groups, is a significant improvement over the previous version, where it was proposed we're going to have 52 of these sound and light events per year. 12 is acceptable. There are a number of concerns I still have and share with other residents regarding the amplified sound and light levels. But compared to what we had previously, I think I would much prefer this new version that was proposed. And just, you know, don't rush it through. Make sure it's all, it's all clear and in good form, so there's no misunderstandings. So yes, I guess technically I'm now withdrawing my opposition, and I am supporting the new version of the text amendment. And again, I'd like to just echo what Ann said. This was not an issue of usage of the thing by third parties. This was an issue of amplified sound. And, you know, if you're living in a neighborhood and you have amplified sound right next to you, that is distressing. So I just, I probably shouldn't say this, but I think 70 decibels would have been a better level, because that is what the EPA recommends. And I don't understand why you'd put in ordinance that would state something that was higher than the EPA recommended levels or why you'd subject students and attendees to an event where the levels were excessive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Torres. Any questions for Ms. Torres? All right, thank you very much. Those in, anyone else in opposition that would like to speak about the public hearing, please come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Albert Alby McGlorn.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. My name is Alby McGlorn, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you very much for having us all on tonight. I've been following the process for quite some time, but haven't been actively engaged really until recently. I believe firmly in as small a government as possible and was kind of frustrated that I felt like we were, as citizens, really calling on government to solve problems that government doesn't necessarily need to solve. They're bigger things that the government can get in the middle of. And so my role in this was part of the negotiating team to try to, try to, in as much as possible, reach a compromise that is better for the neighborhood than what was previously on the table. I am a lifelong resident of Pitt County, an owner of a small architectural practice downtown. And I, you know, I think when we talk about compromise, it's important for everyone to understand. I've coached lots of sports here for Greenville, out at Bradford Creek and multiple other facilities. And most of those facilities don't have anything near what John Paul has. 75 decibels is what we're talking about as a cap. Just as a frame of reference, East Carolina's football games at Elmhurst average 80 decibels. So when we are compromising as residents, the compromise is relative to that. So I think what I really am hoping to achieve is some goodwill with John Paul. I hope Mr. Ballard and the neighborhood team have realized some of that. And while the compromise is really, in my mind, far from ideal, the resulting text amendment represents a substantial improvement over the original version. Through the negotiation process, it was clear that all the parties really gave something that they wanted to achieve, and so it was really a true compromise. And in the spirit of a reasonable compromise, I can live with where we are right now, and I urge you all to vote in favor of the president language.
Thank you, Mr. McGlorn. Any questions for Mr. McGlorn? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. Anyone else in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker is Thomas Hune.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Thomas Hune, and for the purposes of this evening, doctor is completely unimportant. I live at 1800 Old Mill Court in Planters Walk, and I'm also adjacent to the football field. I will keep my remarks brief, because at this point in the proceedings, I can only echo some of the thoughts that my friends and neighbors have already expressed. First of all, I thank Rich Ballard and the members of city staff and my friends and neighbors, Tom, Alby, and Brett, for having a very productive meeting yesterday and producing a document that I think represents a very firm step in the right direction. I have to say, as a person living right next to the property, that I share concerns expressed by some of my other neighbors. I think 75 decibels is quite high. At the same time, I think it's important to echo what Dr. Reich was saying, that neither I nor many of my neighbors really have any opposition to the motives expressed by some of the folks from JP2 about sharing this facility with young people for sports. That is not the issue, and I feel we need to go on record as saying that doesn't bother us. It's the impact that it has on us as neighbors that is a concern. In the evening, lights, sound, it's all been said. I will say at this point that I can accept the amended text document as it's presented, and I thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hune. Are there any questions for Dr. Hune? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next speaker is Dave Caldwell. Mr. Caldwell, if you are present, you have three minutes to address the city council. Let me just do a quick search on Mayor Conley. Mayor Conley, I do not see him present in the Zoom meeting.
Okay. All right, if he, if he shows up, if time remains, we can go back to him. All right.
Next speaker is Yoshi Newman. Ms. Newman, if you are present, you have three minutes to address the city council. Let me search again. Mayor Conley. Mayor Conley, I do not see Yoshi Newman in the Zoom meeting.
All right, if we have any time, we'll go back to Ms. Newman as well.
Okay. And the last registered speaker that we have is Julie Daniels Yont. If you are present, you have three minutes to address the city council. And I will do a search again. Just make sure we're not having technical difficulties. Mayor Conley, I do not see Julie Daniels Yont in the Zoom meeting.
Okay. All right.
And that concludes the list of registered speakers.
Do we have any comments that were brought, that were sent in via email?
No, sir. All the comments that were received were sent to the city council that were prior to this meeting, and we haven't had any additional comments come through.
All right. Seeing none. We will close the public hearing, open for a board discussion.
I have a couple of comments.
Councilmember Smiley?
I just want to thank everybody involved. I've been following this for literally years, and there's been a lot of, a lot of effort on the part of the staff and a lot of goodwill on both sides of the issue by people trying to find a way to come together. And I know that it's been a struggle for a lot of people, and I know it's been tedious and exhausting, both for the applicant and for a lot of the neighbors. So I just want to thank everybody involved for their good work and their hard work and their goodwill. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other comments for discussion amongst the council?
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Litchfield?
I'd like to echo Councilmember Smiley's comments in thanking the neighbors of that area and being willing to compromise and also Mr. Ballard of being willing to compromise and also his philanthropy for the community. You know, a fair deal is when all parties walk away feeling that they've accomplished something, and that's what happened here. As good compromise and good discussions and open dialogue created a good opportunity for all here. So thank you to all involved, especially in city staff who spent a good amount of time in facilitating these communications back and forth. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or discussions amongst the council?
I want to thank the John Paul Catholic School for opening their doors to some of our, at least one of our ball teams in the community that tries to have something, some mentoring football team, trying to keep kids out of trouble and to keep them focused on one thing, that's your lesson and, you know, have a little sport and do what's right. And I just really want to thank the church for embracing them and having them to come and practice on their field. They didn't have a place to practice. They used to practice at North Pitt some. But when the school opened, then the football team practiced. So it is a wonderful thing that everyone has done, and everyone has come together and compromised on working and allowing them to have these kids to come and practice basketball now. You know, we feel like they got a, they have a home now, and so they don't have to worry about fields and to practice. I know that the Catholic Church is a great outreach for communities and for families and for helping people. And I just want to thank Mr. Ballard and all the people that have worked hard together and our staff. It seems like there's been a lot of meetings. There's been a lot of discussions. There's been a lot of everything. And for everyone to now come together, it is a blessing to the kids, to the underserved kids in our community to be able to practice basketball, I mean, football on a turf field. It's a wonderful accomplishment, and it's a great marriage of the team and them and the church. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion amongst the council?
Yes. I want to also piggyback on Proton Mayor Rossis and other council members. I think that the community and everyone coming together, a year is a long time, which shows dedication on both sides, fighting for what they believed in, and to come to a consensus is very good and shows what we can do when we work together for the greater of our community. It's good to see our youth having a place to go.
It's good to see our youth having a place to go, someplace stable, won't have to question now what is available to them, and so thanks to everyone involved for that.
All right. Any other comments?
You know, I too want to say, I think it speaks volumes about our community. I think it shows that, you know, in times of turmoil nationally, it's nice to be able to see our community members come together for the greater good of all. So I think this is just another proud moment in our city's history, and I'm excited to be able to see that all parties were able to mutually benefit from these discussions over the last year. So thank you to everyone involved.
All right. And then pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we will now move on to item number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 16 is a resolution to close a portion of Josh Court, and I will turn it over to City Engineer Lisa Kirby for that presentation. Ms. Kirby? She'll quickly go through this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to share my screen in order to share some maps with you this evening. So I will be presenting the petitions for the street closures this evening. The first one is the street closure for Josh Court. This item is to consider a closure of a portion of Josh Court, the southern portion of the cul-de-sac located north of Davenport Farm Road in the Tuberna subdivision. The portion of the cul-de-sac will be removed to extend the street to the adjoining property owner or petitioner. Staff comments, both the City of Greenville and GUC have reviewed the request and are requesting a utility easement over and upon the section to be closed. And any questions? I'm available.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Kirby? All right. Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Okay. The first registered speaker that we have is Michelle Inkmezzi. Michelle, if you are present, you have 10 minutes to address the city council. Mayor Connolly, I'll just do a really quick search.
Okay.
I do not see Michelle in the Zoom meeting.
All right. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the applicant, please come forward and state your name for the record. Yes, technically, you will have 10 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers.
Okay. Do we have any comments?
Yep. Looking in the inbox, we do not have any comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this, and I am looking at our inbox, and we have not received any messages in opposition.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now closed, open for any more discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll now move on to item number 17.
Thank you, Mayor Connolly. Item number 17 is a resolution to close a portion of Ridgeway Street. Again, Ms. Kirby.
Good evening. The second closure this evening is for Ridgway Street. This item is to consider closure of a portion of Ridgway Street from, excuse me, hold on one second, from South Broad Street or Broad Street to the southern terminus of Ridgway Street. Ridgway Street is located behind Garrus Evans Lumber Company. The petitioner does own all the property along the street right of way. City staff and GUC have reviewed the request and are requesting utility easement over and upon the street section to be closed.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Kirby? Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we have a registered speaker, Mr. John Evans. Hold on, we will. Mr. John Evans, you have 10 minutes to address the council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This is just a request to make our property a better shape for future expansion. I do not have plans right now for a building. It's also going to make our back of our property a little bit safer and is in more alignment with the latest rezoning of the property back there. So it's just a better use for the property for us to use it and safer for us to maintain it from within inside our fence. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer, but I don't have a 10-minute speech prepared, so I will let us all go home.
Thank you for that, Mr. Evans. Any questions for Mr. Evans? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers to speak in favor, and I'm looking in the inbox, and we did not receive any messages in favor.
Okay. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and I'm looking at the inbox, and we did not receive any messages in opposition.
All right. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. All right. And just as a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, item number 18.
Thank you. 18 is the approval of the draft 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and I'll call on Senior Planner Tiana Bearman for that presentation.
All right. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll share my screen. Okay. All right. Well, the purpose of the 2019 CAPER, it's essentially a report to HUD that details the resources that were made available and goals and outcomes that were attained in the last program year. Here you can see the resources that were made available to the City of Greenville compared to the amount expended during the program year, about half a million dollars more from previous years was expended through CDBG. Some goals and outcomes, we, staff was able to preserve affordable housing.
Tiana, I'm sorry. I don't think we're on the same thing. I just see the first slide.
There we go.
There it is. Thank you.
Is it catching up?
Yep, you're good now.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So preservation of affordable housing was made possible through 10 rehabilitations of owner-occupied units, as well as beginning construction in last year of four new homeowner, or four new units for homeownership, as well as more than 400 households assisted through public service dollars. Other acknowledgements include 100% of rehab contracts going to MWBE-certified general contractors and eight nonprofits funded through public service dollars. Right, citizen participation included 23 days of a public comment period that exceeds the 15-day limit, or, excuse me, the 15-day minimum. And while HUD has, HUD has lifted the submission deadline, staff still plans to submit the CAPER to HUD by September 30th. Okay? So staff recommends approving the 2019 CAPER for CDBG and home programs and authorizing staff to submit to HUD for final review and approval.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bearman. Any questions for Ms. Bearman? All right. Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item in favor, and I'm looking in the inbox, and we didn't receive any messages.
All right. Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition, and we have not received any messages in opposition.
All right. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. No discussion. As a reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam Manager, we'll move on to item number 19.
Item number 19 is the 2021 Annual Action Plan for CDBG, CDBG-CV, and the home program. And again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bearman.
Okay. I do not see anybody anymore. Can you see me?
Nope.
Okay. Let me see if I can log back in here.
Yeah, I think your video is off.
I don't know what happened there. Okay, give me just one moment.
Doesn't even show a video option for you now, Tiana.
Okay. Um, let's see. I'm trying to reconnect. All right. I think we're back.
Yep.
Okay. All right, are we back?
We still can't see you.
I just asked you to start your video, see if it pulls up a prompt.
Okay, what about now? It says I'm sharing my screen.
Not just yet.
Okay. Is it working?
No.
Hey, Tiana, are you on a city computer? Chris is still here, I think, in the meeting. Chris Ward.
I just switched over, but I can get on a city computer in just a second. It's right next to me if I need to try that.
Mayor Connolly, we could go on with item number 20, if you would like, and then while Ms. Bearman and staff are trying to work on getting that presentation loaded.
I think that's a great idea. Let's move on to item number 20, and we'll go back to number 19.
Great. So item number 20 is a resolution and an economic development agreement for a job creation grant for HC Composites LLC doing business as World Cat. Valerie, I think we do have at least one speaker waiting for that one. And I have that presentation, so I'm going to share my screen. Let's hope that this will work. Whoa, hold on. I'm going to share my screen. Share. Okay. Are you all seeing that?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Let's start from the beginning. Okay. And let's fix the display. There we go. How's that? Guys, good?
Looks good.
Awesome. Look at that. The city manager can even do that. We are pleased to talk about World Cat today. World Cat is a builder of offshore power catamarans. World Cat has been interested in building a facility in Greenville to, in which it would construct its custom 36-foot to 50-foot offshore catamarans. Currently, much of this work is being done in Tampa with contract employees, and World Cat is desiring to bring that work to Greenville and in a facility in the city limits, I'm sorry, in the ETJ. World Cat estimates that in the next few months, they will hire approximately 60 employees, and over the next year, they're adding additional 40, for a total of about 100, to support this new line of power catamarans. The average weighted annual salary is $42,000. The positions of these 100 jobs, World Cat will add positions in leadership, engineering, and skilled labor, and World Cat pays approximately 75% of the health insurance for its employees. World Cat has requested that, we requested a job creation grant that the city would pay $1,000 per job for up to $100,000 per year for three years. And per the agreement, World Cat would agree to retain those jobs for three years following the final payment of the grant. So the staff recommendation is to recommend to the city council that the city council approve a job creation grant for World Cat, or Project Tiger, as we previously called it, in the amount of $1,000 per year for three years for a total grant award not to exceed $300,000. So with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions from the city council.
Any questions from the council? Thank you very much. Ms. Wall?
Certainly.
All right. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
First registered speaker that we have is Mr. Andrew Brown. Mr. Brown, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. And Mayor and council members, thank you for listening to me, and I really appreciate the hard work you guys put in. I've been listening since 5:30, and you guys are all troopers. Really, we could not have done this without the support of really the Greenville community. Just from day one of investigating the project on Staten Road, to the support of the development people, to Ann, to everyone helping us with this project, it's been pretty unbelievable. My wife and I moved to Greenville 16 years ago, raised two successful kids out of Greenville, and call Greenville home, and are excited to be building boats in Greenville. As Ann said, we currently build the boats in Tampa. As you can imagine, COVID has been bad for a lot of things in a lot of ways, but great for boating. The demand for boats is up probably 40%. Literally, if we could hire 300 people, we could hire them tomorrow and get to work. So we're excited to be in Greenville. We're excited to build a world-class facility. We are going to plan a lot of renovations, including the architecture and the outside aesthetics, so when you drive by the facility, it's something you want to, you want to come buy a boat, and you also may want to come work there. So we're excited to build out this team. Our core principles are around people. People make the boats, people sell the boats, people service the boats, and we're excited to build the team in Greenville and are ready to get going.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Brown?
I just want to say, as someone who was born in Tampa and chose to move to Greenville, you kind of followed my course there, so wish you all the best in Greenville, and I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, we're excited.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers in favor, and just looking at the public input inbox, we do not have any additional messages in favor.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers to speak in opposition, and looking at the inbox, we have not received any messages in opposition.
All right. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion.
Let's not to lie.
Yeah, I mean, I will say I'm excited to be able to have an opportunity to bring more jobs to our community, especially in the middle of a pandemic. This is awesome. We're really excited to be able to welcome WorldCat to our area, and we're looking forward to them expanding even more beyond those 60 jobs, so. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. Madam manager, I guess we are going to go back to item number 19.
Yes, which is the review of the annual action plan, and I think we'll go back to Ms. Berryman, right?
Right.
Okay. There we go, there we go.
All right.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, let's see. All right, let's see.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So the purpose of the presentation tonight is to amend the draft annual action plan that was presented in the spring to include CBG CV dollars, which are additional CBG dollars made available through the CARES Act specifically for coronavirus relief and recovery. Right, the annual action plan details funding and activities for one of the five years directed by the consolidated plan. The Housing Division administers the programs that are detailed in the annual action plan, and they include affordable housing, public service grants to nonprofits, community economic development, and neighborhood revitalization. Our action plan priorities probably look very familiar to you with the addition of economic development. So the 2020 and 2021 allocations are just shy of $2.5 million, including the CDBG CV dollars. Our programs and funding, as you see here, are the breakdown of CDBG, CDBGV, CV, and Home. These numbers include prior year resources, including this year's allocation. If you'll focus on the CDBG CV column in the middle, you'll see that $100,000 is allocated for public services, $225,301 for emergency rental assistance, and $250,000 for small business assistance. So these numbers and activities should sound familiar. They were presented at a recent council workshop. Right, our public service funding is broken down for several local nonprofits, and with the addition of $100,000 that's made available for COVID response and recovery. All right, so the timeline for the amended plan, staff held a public meeting during the virtual Affordable Housing Loan Committee meeting last evening. And after the public comment period and the public hearing that's being held, we intend to submit the plan to HUD by the end of the month. So staff recommends approval of the amended 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan for CDBG, CDBG CV, and Home Programs. Authorization for the mayor and/or city manager to sign any necessary documentation, and for the plan to be submitted to HUD.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Berryman. Any questions for Ms. Berryman? All right, seeing none. Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
So sorry. We do not have any speakers registered for this item in favor, and I'm looking at the inbox right now, and we did not receive any messages in favor either.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers registered in opposition, and we did not receive any messages in opposition.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion. All right, seeing none. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. And that will conclude our public hearings for the evening. We'll move on to item number 21.
Thank you. Item number 21 is a budget ordinance amendment number two to the 2021, to the 2020, 2021 City of Greenville Budget Capital Projects Fund and Red Light Camera Program Fund. And with that, I will turn it over to Financial Services Director Byron Hayes. Byron?
All right, can you all see my screen? Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is budget amendment number two. Budget Amendment Two includes adjustments to the General Fund, the Facilities Improvement Program Fund, the Street Pedestrian Bond Fund, and the Red Light Camera Fund. Breakdown of the amendments, we are designating occupancy tax reserves to fund the CBA Sports Commission for the fiscal year 2021, as was included in the adopted CBA budget. This is an increase of $275,000 to the General Fund. We are recognizing carryover from prior year funding in the Facilities Improvement Program Fund. This is an increase of just under $2.2 million in the FIP Fund. We are reallocating funding within the Street Improvement Bond Fund to complete the Arlington Resurfacing Project. This is $156,000 that is neutral to the Street Pedestrian Bond Fund, and we are establishing a current year budget of $1.6 million for the Red Light Camera Program. As a result of these amendments, the City Greenville Operating Fund budget increases to $131.4 million, and staff recommends approval of the City of Greenville Operating Fund Ordinance, the Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, and the Red Light Camera Fund Ordinance. Any questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Hayes?
Do we have a net projection as to how much the schools are ultimately going to get out of the Red Light Program for the year? I mean, I know the 1.6 is probably a placeholder.
Yeah, the 1.6 is probably a little bit high. We want to be a little bit conservative with the budget, so we didn't have to bring you back another budget. Last year, we got about $1.4 million for the schools, so we anticipated to be somewhere in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hayes? Anybody want to make a motion?
Second.
All right, I think that was, who made the motion? It was kind of a tired.
Give it to Monica. Give it to Monica.
Motion, motions.
The city manager made the motion.
All right, I'm going to say.
I'll take it, I'll take it.
All right, the motion's made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover.
Yes.
All right. Goodness. All right, so motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Mayor Pro Tim Glover. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'm going to call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Litchfield's a rookie. Aye.
That's six zero on approval, Mayor.
All right, let's move on to the city managers' report.
Mayor, I just have one quick item. I wanted to call out and congratulate Brock Litchworth, our Public Information Officer, as well as Tom Barnett, our Director of Planning and Development Services, for completing the School of Government's Municipal Administration Program. As you all know, it's a year-long program to learn about municipal government. While that program was cut short a little bit because of COVID in the spring, I certainly want to call out and thank Tom and Brock for their participation and congratulate them on completing it. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the comments from the mayor and the city council. Let's start with Councilmember Meyerhopper.
No comment, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember mute.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I would just like to, once again, thank everyone for the hard work they put in on all these issues we discussed tonight, and I would also like to wish my wonderful wife a happy anniversary. We celebrated 14 years of blissful chaos. So I love you, Michelle, and thank you for putting up with me.
All right, Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments, thank you.
Good luck following that one, by the way. At least tell your wife you love her.
She went to bed two hours ago.
She can watch the replay. Councilmember Bell?
I have no comment, other than I would like to express my condolences to Mrs. Litchfield, and I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. That's a joke, I've got no comment.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Daniels?
I'd like to remind everyone, still have time to complete your census. People are coming by, knocking on doors, they knocked on mine, and I completed my census. But do that, and that also, on Saturday, September 12th, there will be free COVID testing at the EP Center sponsored by the Andrew Best Medical Society, Oh North State Medical Society, and the Lucille Gorham Intergenerational Community Center. Come on out from nine to one, and happy anniversary to the Litchfields. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Just want to say, wow, this has been a long meeting. Just want to say, thank you for their hard work, because I know that they put a lot of hard work into what they present us. I want to say thank you all, and thank you all for staying up late with us. And also, our city manager, Assistant City Manager, both Assistant City Managers, Byron and everybody that takes care of the city, so we really don't have to worry because we know it's being well taken care of. They could tell us where every penny is, every I and every T. So I just want to thank them for the hard work that they do, that we don't even see them do behind the scenes, because I know that their job is very tasking for them. So thank you, guys, I love you, and happy anniversary to the Litchfields.
All right, that leaves it with me. First, before I get going, I just want to make sure that our city attorney, our two Assistant City Managers are still on the line. I think this may be the first time that none of them have had to talk during a meeting, a nice long meeting. Ken, are you awake?
He fell asleep after, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the city staff for all that you guys do. I know today was a grueling meeting. We had a lot of different events, but I think that the most important thing is we had 14 public hearings, which means that our city, despite COVID-19, is still moving forward very quickly, which is good. That means there's a lot of activity going on, and so very, very exciting time for our city as we continue to move forward through 2020. So not everything in 2020 is bad. We've got some good things that are happening. And some good news, too, I want to say congratulations to Pitt County for being named an All-American County by the National Civic League. Yes, on Wednesday, August 19, 2020, Pitt County, North Carolina, was recognized as one of 10 All-American County Award winners. This honor was presented to the county by the National Civic League during their annual conference, which was held virtually throughout the nation and hosted from Denver, Colorado. The award comes in recognition of the county's work in inclusive civic engagement to address health and well-being, and create stronger connections among residents, businesses, and nonprofit government leaders. So congratulations to Pitt County for this amazing award that they received, and we will continue to push that out just to show how great all of Pitt County is, and it's a great place to live. And other than that, it is 9:08, according to my clock right now.
How long have we adjourned?
How about we make a motion to recess? Like our.
I second myself.
Until Monday night.
All right, so, all right, motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhopper to recess our meeting until September 14th at 6:00 PM.
Yay.
All right.
Good night, all.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote. Not yet, don't hang up.
I'm not going to hang up.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Unmuted.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Got it. Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
That's six zero on approval, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a wonderful weekend, and I will see you on Monday evening.
Monday it is. Good night, everybody.